Okay, we are recording. Welcome everyone to the town of Wakefield zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 13, 2020. We usually have a legal notice, but this hearing in particular, we just have some other matters on our agenda. Some follow-ups to a couple of previously approved decisions as well as two pre-applications. So there's no legal notice to read this evening. We will take them in the order as listed in the published agenda. So the first matter is 200 Quanapower Parkway by law 190-45E pre-application meeting. Brian, yes, I'm sorry.
Can you do a voice roll call?
Yes.
For the recording?
Oh, sorry. Yep, we should probably do that. Yep, you're right. So before we proceed, so my name's Dave Hadfield, Chair of the Board. Someone else want to join in with your attendance?
Amy Wall.
Thank you.
I'm Lucy. Greg McIntosh.
Michael Feely.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so Brian.
Brian McGrill, over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. You referring to me? Are you? Good evening.
Yes, I am. Welcome. Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and members of the public. I hope everybody's doing well in these troubled times. Thank you for hosting the meeting. I'm going to just go through kind of the attendance here so I can tell you who is here from representing my client. If I can scroll through this. I guess to start, before I do that, we have a pre-application request hearing or meeting, I should say, regarding 200 Quanapower Parkway in the possible redevelopment of that site. This is a proposal, as you can see from the screen, that's being brought forward by Cabot Cabin in Forbes. They currently have the property under agreement to purchase from Waterstone, who is the owner of the property. I think the board is familiar with Waterstone and also familiar with the site because it was a recent permitting process before Yaw Board regarding some possible research and development that could happen on that site. So that was not too long ago, so I'm sure there's some familiarity with the board on this property. With me tonight from Cabot Cabin in Forbes is Jay Doherty. Jay, I think you're on you, so, or Mr. Chairman, if you could unmute Mr. Doherty, or perhaps he has to do that himself. Jay, you there? And Jay, in case you don't see it, at the bottom of the screen, if you put your mouse down to the left, you're going to see a mute icon. Alls you need to do is click on that to unmute. There you go.
I believe I am.
Jay, are you there? Can you hear us now?
Jay? Um, I just lost it, sorry.
Are you there, Jay? He's on. I'm muted. We're just not hearing him.
Hello?
Jay, you there?
Yes. I am here. Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you now. Yeah, that's fine. So we can't, we can't see you. So are you on? Do you have a camera?
I do, I thought.
If you go down to the bottom, if you bring your mouse to the bottom of the screen and go to the left, you might have to start the video. Icon.
I don't see that. I'm sorry. I'll take a look again.
If you bring, yeah, if you bring your mouse all the way down, it's on the left near the mute button, right next to it, there might be a start video that you would need to click. But in any event, I mean, you can see the screen, right, Jay?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, good.
We get, we got, we got a picture of you now. Okay, there we go. Right. Hi, Jay. So this is Jay Doherty. He's one of the principals of Cabot Cabin in Forbes. And also, we have with us, Brian O'Connor from Cube Three Architects. The Board of Appeals is familiar with Brian. He's been involved in a number of projects in Wakefield, and also Ally Adams from Cube Three. And finally, Matt D'Amico is on with us also, and he is with Cabot Cabin in Forbes. I think I've covered everybody, right, Jay? Who's here?
I think so.
Okay, great. So what we're looking to accomplish tonight, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, pursuant to our zoning bylaw under section 190-45E, it allows a prospective applicant to, prior to submitting their application for a special permit to Yaw Board, to meet with you and describe the project. And, you know, after you hear it, you could waive or modify the requirements for what is required in the detailed site plan. Quite honestly, we don't, we don't think you're going to waive anything. We think to the contrary, you're probably going to require more. And that's really the purpose of this meeting because we want to kind of give you a broad scope of what Cabot Cabin in Forbes is anticipating that their application will include. And once you see that, you might say, you know, in addition to what is normally required in our bylaw, we're going to also want to see A, B, C. We need that information. That's critical to us so that we can make sure that we have a complete package when and if an application goes forward for the proposal. What is required, just so everybody knows what is normally required on the site plan, it has to show all existing proposed structures, parking spaces, driveway openings, driveways, service areas and other uses, facilities for sewage, refuse, and other waste disposal, in the surface water drainage, landscape features, fences, walls, planting areas, and locks. There's also a requirement of a zoning dimensional table, drainage calculations, map showing proposed two-foot contours, and outdoor lighting, and direction and intensity of the lighting. There's nothing in here regarding a traffic requirement that's normally required by the board. That's something that we would like to discuss with the board once Jay has an opportunity to kind of give you a vision of what our site plan will be. So what you're going to see tonight, and Jay will go through the presentation, is really some conceptual stuff that they're thinking for the site. They have not developed a formal site plan or formal architectural plans at this point. They're in the works. We do have some ideas that you will see tonight, and this should give you a good concept of what would be anticipated on an application. And again, you know, the main purpose of this is to show it to you and then get feedback of other items that you're going to want and require of us so that we're complete. So with that said, Mr. Chair, if I could pass this over to Jay Doherty, and Ally has control of the screen. I will tell you, we looked at this today, so when Jay tells her to go to the next, next screen, there might be a little bit of a delay. It's just kind of the way the system works. So so I think that's fine. Jay, are you all set to take it from here?
Yes. Yeah, that's terrific. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. It's a privilege to share your time tonight. We really appreciate it. Ally, would you please advance to the next slide? Cabot Cabin in Forbes is the oldest development firm in Massachusetts, founded in 1904. It's probably best known for its development on and around 128 with suburban, industrial, and office parks. Ally, are you advancing that? Yes. However, in the last 40 years, I've been, I've been with the company about 40 years, and my entire career has been built on taking the company into transit-oriented development. Although when we started, we just called it building around the train stations. And along with that, it tends to be paired with waterfront development. And if you name a major waterway in Greater Boston, there's a very good chance that if it's near transit, we have developed a project near it. And we've spent a lot of time trying to learn the best ways to approach these. We spent a lot of time working with the old MDC and DCR, Landscape Architects. The first of these were a pair of parks in Medford surrounding the Wellington Orange Line. This is one of them. And it was a site that is very transit-dependent, and this is a snapshot of a portion of one of the waterfront parks that we developed. This one is on the Mystic River, next to the first office building, and encompasses several acres, some of which are part of the private ownership of that project, and part of, some of which were part of the NBC's ownership, now DCR. You can look across that river, you can see the old Assembly Square. I'm sorry, did someone say something? Okay, and one of the things that happened when we did this was it triggered the development of a bunch of these types of parks up and down the Mystic and the Malden Rivers, which is where we had started. Go ahead, Ally. So one project that I just want to mention quickly that contributes to our background in this is in Needham. It's called Charles River Landing, and it was developed in a partnership with the Selectmen in Needham in 2006. It's within the former New England Business Center Park. I think it's now called the Needham Crossing. And that was a park that had really, it was the original first development in 1948 of suburban office parks by CCNL. And it really lost its fighting edge by 2000, and many of the tech companies would no longer locate there. And the Selectmen and I tried to come up with a plan to revitalize it. To our mutual surprise, one of the things we thought might help would be to inject a residential component and to try and give people who wanted to work in this area more options for living. One of the things that tech companies have become very demanding about is proximity of their workforce to the locations where they're working, which is why you've seen so many companies move from 128 to the seaport. This particular investment was very successful. TripAdvisor followed. NBC Universal followed, Shark followed, and that park is not quite vigorous. This project, Charles River Landing, you can see it. It's a piece of new construction. In the foreground, you see the DCR monument. So we built a link along the Charles. The photo to the right is between the building and the Charles Riverbank. The path is on private land, that is on rural land, but our work encompassed both private land and the Charles River, Riverbank with DCR and the town. And this, by the way, we'll come back to this later in the show because one of the things that we would like to try and do in a residential development here would be to avoid putting out a great deal of parking at grade. And the advantage of that, while it requires some investment, is that you can get this kind of product. You could get more enhanced public green space, walking paths, jogging paths, and you can hide the parking. The parking disappears. This, this has a parking garage. It's behind the facade you see there, and this is very, very similar in construction and very, very similar in approach to the kind of things we would be thinking about in Wakefield, if you could advance, Ally. So that's Charles River Landing. And as I said, that, when I say a partnership with the Selectmen, they ended up in the end asking us to proceed on a friendly 40B basis, which we did. That also helped them make a major dent in their 40B liability, which they appreciated a great deal. They were having problems with having 40Bs penetrate the neighborhoods where somebody had a single-family home site, and someone would come along with a 40B and develop 100 units on a one-acre site. And I think Needham now, primarily because of developing that park, there's been a following development by one of our partners, Toll Brothers, and that has completed the 10% compliance of the area. This project is from Woburn Downstreet. It is at the Anderson Commuter Rail Stop, which you may be familiar with. It's very unusual in that it is a very well-transit-serve location. The site, the building you're looking at, which is now under construction, is literally 500 feet from the train station, which not only includes the train, but Logan Express and Amtrak. And this was actually part of the Superfund of Woburn. And what happened is we identified the site, and we did some preliminary studies with EPA, and it turned out that there were the ingredients to make the site a clean site. We worked with EPA for two years. We did that. Now, this site has a little bit different approach than the kind of things we'll be talking about tonight because Woburn wanted this site to begin to establish a more gateway appearance to the T. So you come down the ramp onto Atlantic Ave at Commerce. This is Atlantic and Commerce. So this is more striking in architecture than we would be suggesting at Quanapower. Also, at the request of the town, they asked that we try to reinvigorate the street with restaurants. And what you see there is several thousand square feet of restaurants. Raytheon is located nearby. There are several other employers. And as I said, it's become difficult to keep these tech employers without amenities and without lockable nearby living options and transit. So this project had a very deliberate aim in that respect. One element of this project, you can see right away, again, this is a wrapped garage. When I say a wrapped garage, the garage is built, and it's usually a precast concrete or concrete garage, and then the development is literally wrapped around the garage. And so you don't see the garage from any of the streets, and you probably, in most instances, for most projects, would not see the garage at its roof. The roof is, the roof and the floors are generally contiguous. So people that are driving up in the garage actually park on the floor where they will be entering into a corridor into their home. And Woburn is under construction. Callahan Construction is building it now. We've gone into a joint venture with Toll Brothers as well for their operations, and they'll come in and assist with the management. And that one is now pretty well along, and those are the features that we've worked with Chairman Rich Haggerty of the Selectmen and Mayor Galvin. And this is the kind of concept they want to see. So we're, we're very attuned to trying to integrate the objectives of the community in the development. Sometimes those objectives includes things like a vigorous menu of amenities and that very active grade. Sometimes it doesn't. We're building a project in Brighton. It's 750 units, and in that case, it's about 500 feet from Brighton Center, and there are no amenities in that project so that all of the traffic from that is reinforcing Brighton Center, which needs the reinforcement. Go ahead, Ally. The next slide is going to be an aerial of the site. One thing that's very unusual about 200 Quanapower is it is an unusually large site in Greater Boston. It's 24 and a half acres, and that is extraordinary. Greater Boston's a very well-developed area, and it's rare that you'll find a site of this size. And because of it, really represents a unique kind of challenge to try and get it right. And in this case, you see about a good portion of the site is what we call disturbed. That is, it has the old Amica Mutual building on it, quite a lot of parking. And then to the north and east, you see the wetlands that comprise a portion of the site. Ally, you can advance as we go here. And then, of course, 128 is the boundary on the north, where it is a major influence. It's hard when you're not on the site to appreciate how dominant and influenced 128 can be. It is something that is very much, you want to screen, you want to, you want to build against. And you can see here how that happens. You don't see it as you walk the trail because the building, if you're at gray level, you tend not to see it, but you certainly hear it, and you certainly hear some of the surrounding elements. Go ahead, Ally, that go with it. So when you look at the context of the site, you do have some green elements. Well, this is an interesting slide. What we did is we superimposed the size and outline of 200 Quanapower on downtown Wakefield to give you a sense of the scale of the site. And you can see it runs from Church Street all the way down to the bottom part of Wakefield, Wakefield downtown, and it runs about 250 feet, encompasses a long chunk of Main Street and about 250 feet in either direction. It's about 2,000 feet long and about 500 feet wide. Go ahead, Ally. The, the components of, of context of the site, while they do include the lake and the wetlands, which are very charming and appealing and really quite precious, you can see that the existing conditions work against that. The existing conditions are generally broken pavement, unattended landscaping, not much in the way of lighting. Go ahead, Ally, continue. With, with antiquated drainage and a lot of what we call impervious surface. And we'll come to a little bit, you can keep moving, Ally, that we'll come to later. The, aside from the lake, which is, of course, the dominant influence, and the wetlands, which are both enormously attractive elements, the balance of the context of the site has things that don't necessarily support the kind of feeling you'd like to see a significant site like this have. It's a media butter, is an, is an office parking garage. As you move down towards North Ave, you have Lakeside Office Park, where the office buildings and the hotel, I hope you don't mind me saying, are a little aged. And then as you emerge onto North Ave, you have in front of you the Subaru Car Dealership. Then across 128, you have overlooking the site, Jordan's Furniture and Home Depot, and a large sea of parking and a large number of conventional retail stores. And then, of course, you do have some grocery. Go ahead, Ally, grocery and industrial. So as you try and look at a site like this and say, my gosh, look at all the beauty that is around it, you do have to begin to deal with the fact that the context does give you some things that you want to try and steer away from, and that you want to try and de-emphasize as you plan the site. You can keep going. These are some of the close-ups, Ally. These are some of the close-ups, although these areas are probably quite familiar to you. And many of these areas, such as Lakeside, these don't participate in the waterfront. There is, of course, public ownership and public frontage on the lake at 200 Quanapower, but that's not universal. That peters out in sections going towards North Avenue. And then, of course, you do have a very dominant presence across the highway for Jordan's Furniture and the IMAX Theater. Keep going there, Ally. So what our concepts are and what we are testing with you tonight are the ways that we would see developing a site like this. Like most of our projects, we want to create a place, a sense of place that is part of the community. That's a very large goal of ours. I'm not a big fan of projects that are indistinguishable from one another. In our Brighton project, we inherited two historic buildings that were incredibly dilapidated from the 1900s, a church and a monastery. And after a lot of careful evaluation and work with Secretary Galvin in the neighborhood, we made a commitment to renovate and restore those. It's a $45 million commitment. But I guarantee you that when you walk into that location, you won't be confused as to where you are. You will know you're in the St. Gabriel's neighborhood of Brighton. You're not in Quincy, and it's a very distinctive thing. And we try and do that by embracing the key elements that give the character to the property. And in this case, of course, it's the lake. So our major goal in how we look at this is to embrace the lake, to celebrate the lake, protect the lake, and to make the lake a public place of the community. We are not interested in developing a project that has a high sense of private space where people feel uninvited, where people feel that they're in a protected area where there are security guards. This is intended to be, and to the best of our ability, we would make it, a place where people would like to go and would feel welcome and would feel they could uniquely enjoy what the lake has to offer. That means that we need to keep height of buildings away from the lake, and we need to keep the mass of the buildings away from the lake. And as I said earlier, we want to diminish surface parking to the bare bones that are needed for essential services such as dropping people off, visitors, and not for the fastball of the parking that's needed to serve the development. We work within the envelope of existing zoning. This is a site that's zoned for residential up to 870 units by special permits. And we work with that zoning. We're not seeking a variance or any new zoning. One thing I want to emphasize that, as I've walked the site, I'd like to see the site more welcoming in a broader way in terms of public safety. The pathways are not lit. The pathways are broken up. There's a lot of shrubbery around it, and I don't think it feels like a very safe and secure place. So in addition to an attractive environment, we want to emphasize that this is a place that's safe, even if you're here at 6:00 PM on a winter night, and you're out for a walk with your dog. It doesn't feel like a place that is unsafe to you. So some of the things we aren't, we aren't proposing, this is, and the way that this might be more typically approached would be to do surface parking. And you can see what that does to the green space, and you can see what it does to the vistas that would be available for the lake. I'm very much against creating seas, a sea of parking and planting buildings in the middle of them, and having a product that could come from suburban Maryland or, or suburban Hangham that's indistinguishable. Our projects really want to feel like they have a unique character that participates in, go ahead, Ally, in the character of the community. So this is not the approach we want to take in this case. So the next slide will begin to take you into a draft plan. When I say a draft plan, it's just that. It's a plan that tries to take the concepts I've articulated and begin to reflect them in a plan that we would think might be a good fit with those concepts. So again, we would be looking to create what I call wrapped garages, as I mentioned earlier, and you see two of them here. In the case of the first building, which is B1, that is fully wrapped. And what that means is that there are residences along each exposure of that garage, and so that those residences are a single corridor, so-called single-loaded corridor that back up to the garage, and they surround the garage. So you would never see that garage. On B2, there is an open-air component as you go up against 128, primarily because we didn't want to, we wanted to push the building back as far as possible, and it didn't make sense to put units there at 128 when we could push the building further back. The buildings start with some slender fingers of residences with a height of three stories and step up to four stories and ultimately step up to five stories. Our early plans, which we shared with some members of the public, did include six-story development and did include taller development near the waterfront. And we shifted to this approach to try and step back and make the waterfront as though it's the dominant element and to push back as far as possible, the actual mass of any building. The result of that is that you have an additional three acres of public green open space added to that section of the Lake Quanapower Walkway. Our approach on these is to do all that the community is comfortable letting us do in terms of providing the infrastructure and the cleanup, whatever the Conservation Commission of the Town views as appropriate goals and a continuing level of maintenance at our expense. And that is up to the community. In the case of what you saw in Needham, we maintain that. We plow it. We plow it. Uh, the utilities are stubbed to the buildings and are on the buildings' account. And, um, the maintenance of the landscaping, the maintenance of the pathway is again on our tab, even if it's in the public way. But that is at the discretion of the community. If the community feels it's better for the community to, um, maintain, then we're certainly comfortable with the public property being that way. In many communities, particularly if there's any state component, not in this case, but where the state gets involved, most neighborhoods don't want the state involved because the maintenance goes unattended. One other suggestion that we've offered, and it's just a suggestion, is, uh, you see at the bottom, it's, it's, it's a public loop dock. This is purely optional. It doesn't have to be done. Um, it's something that I thought, we heard comments about people wanting a place in addition to green grass and plantings, wanting a place to really just sit and admire the view and, um, have an opportunity to enjoy the lake. One other thing I will mention is that, um, Quanapoe Parkway remains. We would, again, with the cooperation and direction of your DPW and yourselves, we would propose to rebuild it, install modern drainage and lighting and to maintain it if you wish, if you would let us do that and take responsibility for keeping up pavement and, uh, doing things to, uh, maintain the landscaping and the lighting. Uh, at some point, we would love to have a dialogue about landscaping. We emphasize, uh, making sure that landscaping is viable by selecting the right species for the locale. And we believe in putting and installing in such a way that where it needs to be irrigated, it is irrigated, the project takes care of that, so that you don't have a bunch of nice plantings and 12 months later you have a bunch of dead plantings. Go ahead, Ally. So those are the major components of, of, of the project and, um, Ally, if you would move ahead. And what we'll do is we'll move into the next set of slides that are a little bit closer, more closely examining. This is a, this is back to Charles River Landing. And this is, in that instance, uh, its wrapped garage. Its garage actually, this one actually penetrates a little bit above the roof line. Uh, most of ours don't do that. They are at or below the roof line of the contiguous floors. And you can see there how this building was designed to, uh, fit in with the, uh, Charles River, Riverbank. Um, the Charles River, Riverbank in Needham was probably the most, um, I don't know what the right word would be. It, the, the business park had over the years basically crowded in on the riverbank and basically, uh, blighted it. And one of the goals the Selectman and I had was to begin to reinstall, uh, the natural terrain, the natural plantings. And I think we were reasonably successful in that. Now, when we come here and we employ this approach, you can see that the amount of, of green space changes substantially. On the existing site about, and we're, we're excluding the wetlands. The wetlands are not part of this calculation. They're inherited, there, there's no, there's no, uh, part of the numbers that I'm talking about that constitute the wetlands. The existing building of building footprint and pavement, uh, leaves, it takes almost 70% of the site. And if that were to be expanded, and I think there may have been some expansion planned under the special permit for the R and D, uh, that would, that might have grown. Uh, but 70% impervious surface leaving 31% green space. And what we've done is dramatically shifted that so that we now have over half the site there as open green space and pervious space. That is rechargeable, uh, open area where rainfall goes to ground. That works with our roof systems as well. Our roof systems are charged into, uh, cisterns so that they can be naturally filtered, uh, to, uh, eventually drain into the aquifer. And obviously when you do that, you get a, a much purer, uh, uh, you know, the ground acts as a natural cleaner of the water and it's infiltration. Go ahead, Ally. So there is a substantial benefit. You add three acres of open space and you make a major shift in the amount of, of green space and pervious recharge area that comes with the project. Ally, you can move through the next, uh, couple. Um, so these are some images and that's what they are. They are images that show and illustrate options for people to consider and the boards to consider, the Concom, yourselves and others, as to what you want to do. Most of the discussion reflects how much the community wants to install infrastructure uh, that is intended to encourage people to come and to have it active and how much is intended to be passive and quiet and not necessarily very busy. You can do both, I think, on a site this size and we could design that. Um, and in fact, when we do courtyards in buildings, we'll often develop one courtyard so it's intended for a great deal of activity and one courtyard as what we call a quiet courtyard where people will sit and read a book or have a quiet conversation. Uh, to the extent the community is comfortable with it, we would, uh, be prepared to make investments in providing, uh, additional public services to enjoy the lake. And that includes the loop dock. This is not a required component. It may not be a desirable component. Um, but it might be something that you want to think about. And if you'd like us to, to work with you to design something that's responsive to what the community would like, then we'd be happy to, happy to do that. What we're going to go into next is a series of views of this plan taken from different points along the approach, uh, to the site and to the buildings. So the first one we're about to see is the entryway that would come from Lowell Street. So as you drive in from Lowell Street, to your left is the waterfront. And what you see ahead of you is the, the building. You can see the building is set back. You can see it begins as three stories, steps to four and then is five. Behind that building, wrapped within that building is the parking garage. And that car is driving on a leg that can curl around and continue through, uh, on Quanapoe, Quanapoe Parkway. The improvements you see here are just illustrative. Uh, in some cases, people like to see, uh, stone installed that creates seating areas. Uh, you can also, of course, terrace the approach to some of this so that you have natural seating areas. Uh, this is from the North Ave entry. So we've come up and we're approaching the site. We're almost where the existing building's footprint would be. And to our right is the expanded waterfront. And you can see some of the activities that are suggested there. And to the left you have the buildings. There is some upgrade parking in the front of that building and the courtyards behind that building. And these are areas for drop-offs, uh, for, uh, parking where people can park and then step out and enjoy the waterfront. Um, and if it is desirable, uh, we could as well build in, uh, some amenity that could also serve the waterfront, such as a coffee shop. Uh, but the general philosophy we've taken, however, doesn't do that. And I'll just mention quickly that it seems to us that the really appealing amenity area is downtown Wakefield. And our hope and ambition would be to direct our populace to make use of that as its major amenity base. This is a view from the center part of the pedestrian path. Uh, and you can see, you, now you can see into the new open courtyards uh, that are created by the division of the buildings. In tying up to you, Ally, you can go ahead. Um, one thing that we have been very successful in doing, and I believe would be viable here, is we learned early, uh, in the eighties that making transit really convenient and accessible has a lot to do with the success of the project as a transit-served project. Uh, and what that means is if you're going to, for example, on this one, uh, where you have, uh, a major commuter rail, uh, stop, um, very accessible if you were riding a bike or walking, but also, you know, come February, uh, even the hardiest of Bostonians don't necessarily want to, uh, walk, uh, the, over a mile, uh, in bad weather. So we have found and we have established, I think, I've lost count actually. We've established at least four, uh, shuttle systems subregionally, we beginning in Medford. Um, and those would run to the Orange Line Terminal. As the area developed and became more walkable, I suspect that's not, it needed anymore. We established one in East Cambridge, when East Cambridge was an undeveloped industrial area. Probably the most successful one we established is actually in Needham. You don't think of Needham as a, um, a transit location, but we set up a shuttle system. Many of the employers joined with us and it goes to the Green Line at Newton Highlands. And people really enjoy it a great deal. TripAdvisor, uh, complements it with its own service and it's been very, very successful. Um, and if you do that at the birth of the project, the project tends to be, uh, tends to attract people that want to emphasize transit use, uh, that want, uh, maybe it's a couple and one member of the couple works downtown and they don't really want to own the two cars. That's an increasing trend in particularly amongst younger people, underage 35. I have, uh, would you go back there for a minute, Ally? I have three children, uh, underage 35, uh, 28 to 36, 35 rather, and, uh, none of them have the car in their lives. And none of them have really been part of, uh, depending on a car in their lives. Um, they always have been attracted to locations of, of transit. If you could go back, Ally, for one, one small piece. One thing that we've, um, developed over the years and it's most, um, obvious in the Ailwif area, the west area of Cambridge, is that today's shuttle systems are not like old shuttle systems. The vehicles can be very, very nice. This is an actual vehicle from the Ailwif TMA. Um, and it's, you can see it's, it's leather seating. It has Wi-Fi, it has cup holders. Uh, it is, uh, something that is very attractive and appealing, uh, even on a short ride, if it's a 10 or 15-minute ride. More importantly, the technology today with smartphones allows the user to be able to track availability, not only of the shuttle, but of, uh, the, the schedule of the, of the stops. So if you're in Ailwif, which is a red line terminal, uh, it's tied in to the MBTA information system. So you can look at your, um, smartphone. You can identify the time that you expect different services to be running uh, at the red line terminal and you can look and see when the shuttle is expected to be proximate to you. And that's been very, very successful. So the participation for transit is higher than you might otherwise think it would be. And we put a great deal of emphasis on, emphasis on it. And it's not just for green and climate change. It's also because it's what people desire. They really very much want to be less car dependent if they can. Go, go ahead, Ally. We would, uh, we would be looking for this, uh, shuttle to also operate in such a way that it could be, uh, attractive to tie into, um, the downtown and the merchants downtown. And the other pieces that we add to the mobility are, we have a very, uh, sophisticated, uh, and convenient and attractive bicycling facilities. We've been building bike rooms since 2013. I think we did the first major one in Cambridge and they've become more elaborate. They've become more inviting. They've become more convenient. Um, we put places, we put equipment in place for you to maintain the bike. In some of our projects, uh, bike shops visit once a week to perform repairs on a scheduled basis. Um, and it's been a very successful component and it's increasingly used in our projects. And the design of the project itself in terms of accommodating bike paths as well as walking and jogging would be very deliberate to be worked on with you. And we would have a robust, uh, bicycle facility within the residences so that people feel very comfortable to the extent that they can make their, uh, their, their daily living by bike, that they can do that. I think this would be particularly valuable for weekend use to the downtown where you could, uh, grab your bike, uh, and get downtown and do errands and such without the need to step into a car and to, you know, go driving around for a parking space. Go ahead, Ally. Uh, ultimately, when we have developed these shuttle systems, uh, we've been successful in getting them vigorous enough that if, that other people tend to imitate them in the area and become part of them. And then you're able to move them into a Transportation Management Association. Uh, the, the one we set up in Ailwif is now part of the, uh, Ailwif TMA. The one we set up in Needham is now part of the 128 TMA. And the TMAs come with a variety of other benefits in terms of ride sharing, in terms of, uh, guaranteed ride home, uh, and, and more sophisticated technology. So, um, ultimately it's a, if, if you have more employers, perhaps the office building, uh, and maybe the Riverside, uh, office building participating, then eventually you might be able to tap into the professional operation publicly of the 128 TMA or a subregional TMA of your own. Go ahead there, Ally, and I promise I'm wrapping up here. So, um, the plan that you see is a plan of, uh, that you've seen is a plan of two buildings ranging in height from three to five stories, uh, all but about, I don't know, 60 or 70 of the spaces maybe it, uh, provided at grade. All the other parking is within the garages. The first building has 320 units. The second building has 280 units. The way this schedules out is a project like this requires about two years of planning, permitting and design before you're even thinking about construction. Uh, that's working with you. It's working with members of the community. It's working with the Conservation Commission in this case. And that takes the better part of a year. Then, and only then, you really begin to design the buildings themselves. And that takes a solid 12 months for the first building. So that first building would begin construction in, uh, 2022, in spring or summer of 2022. These buildings take about 28 to 30 months to build. So you're actually looking at a building that would come online, the first building, in 2024. You tend to start the second building, uh, when the first building has another year left on construction. Uh, and therefore that one would arrive in 2025. So that is, uh, it's a, it's, it's an elongated schedule. It's not like all of this appears overnight. Um, and, but it is, uh, that it is, uh, that, that is our approach in terms of the overall concept. And now I'll be quiet. Hopefully you'll have questions that we can answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty. Board members?
Who wants to start?
Have any questions or comments?
I'll start. Gary, first of all, thank you for the presentation. You, you took a lot of my thunder because the first drawings that I saw of six stories and kind of square-ish buildings were nothing that I liked. However, this presentation of coming up from the lake in five stories has, um, certainly softened what I was thinking of the project to begin with. Um, I think you've grasped a lot of the concepts that are important. Uh, open space is huge in town. I guess that the questions I have is what do you see as the makeup of these 600 units? Um, are they condos? Are they apartments? Who managing it? What's your thoughts there?
Uh, the, the natural market position of a project like this would be largely comprised of studios, ones and two bedrooms. Uh, that would be the most, the product that's most in demand. Uh, there's a lot of particularly younger people, um, and they're much more comfortable. Uh, you know, as I mentioned, my kids don't own cars and they don't think about owning houses. They're very comfortable with the concept of rental housing and, um, they tend to fall, they tend to look for locations with a location, the setting, and their access to transportation and amenities is emphasized over the size of the unit. So even in a suburban location, we'd include studios in the mix and we would include ones and twos. So we'd have, I think, a number of young couples that would, would be part of this as well as young professional singles. I would add that we're somewhat guided by the community's input. Some communities really want to see three bedrooms in the mix. Some communities really want to see three bedrooms in the mix. Some communities don't want to see three bedrooms in the mix. Three bedrooms are a little bit easier for a young family to use. They're not a natural component of this market, but if the town wanted to encourage some of that, then certainly we could include a three bed. But generally, this is studios, ones and twos.
So do you see this as a, as rentals, one? And two, as a project that you would keep in your portfolio as compared to selling it off?
We actually, in our original design, included condominiums. We got a, a kind of unusual reaction, which actually made some sense to me. Which is that the, there's a desire for the project to have very responsible stewardship. Where the community can look to one voice and say, you know, we really don't like the way you've been doing this. We don't like the way you've been doing the snow plowing. We, we don't like that, that chemical you're using. We want a more friendly chemical. We told you that. That's in the permit. So this will be institu-, we have institutional partners. By institutional partners, I mean large-scale, international and national companies, usually financial companies. We do have close relationships and we are partnered with at least one public REIT, that is Toll Brothers. So we did suggest some condominiums. And the feeling was the condominiums might not be as able to be disciplined in the operations of the property. My own feeling is that condominiums could be quite popular here. I think that's one where we would take some guidance from the community. I don't see any reason that any of the plans I've shown you couldn't be readily adapted. Even some of those low-rise things, being to get a townhouse feel where you can have independent entries, I think it would be quite good. I think empty nesters would love it. Condominiums generally enjoy a higher tax revenue to the community. It's, that's, I think in this case, we would, we're open to condominiums. I, I think that even with the changes and circumstances of the current market, which is probably not going to be warm and fuzzy towards condos, we certainly would consider putting a, 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 a component of the project. And I, I kind of like the idea, but I'm, I'm really to be guided by you folks in that.
Mr. Chairman, in my, thank you, Gary, in my conclusion, and then I'll let others have the floor. The only thing that, that I think we're going to need beyond the, I mean, there's probably a lot that we're going to need beyond the original site plan is certainly a comprehensive traffic study. As well, for me, a comprehensive economic impact study. Meaning really an analysis of other uses versus this use and what does it mean to the community.
We absolutely understand and agree to do that.
Yeah, and the other one, once you kind of get a more feel for what the structure is, you know, how many units are studios. Also, I think one of the things we need to be aware of is that our schools are pretty much maxed out at this point. So I like hearing ones and twos, not threes and, because it does help with the schools. But I think we need to have an understanding of, you know, with X amount of units, what does that mean usually for school impact? Because I think that's important for us to understand.
Certainly.
That's it.
And that certainly is part of the thinking of, of, to some degree, a project can be shaded in its design to be focused on younger professionals and not on attracting children. For example, if, if we were in a community where, well, I'll just mention, the first project we did in Cambridge, which was birthed in 2012, we put in a tot lot. And the city took it out because the city felt its workforce housing was in too short supply. I guarantee you, now there's been five thousand units delivered in Alewife. And I'm certain that the next project will be asked to install three-bedroom units and a tot lot. So again, you can shape the project, working with the community, to emphasize those features to attract the demographic that's most compatible with what the community wants to see there. So studios, ones and twos, that's, and, and again, condominiums, I think, would lean more towards empty nesters in this case. I think it'd be a wonderful empty nester site. So we put that and we certainly are prepared to do the fiscal and traffic studies.
I guess I lied. I have one more comment. I usually do do that. The other thing I found interesting and I've always hoped for at this end of the lake would be some more public amenities, whether it's restaurant. I mean, this end of the lake has a lot of housing now and a lot of traffic. So whether it's a restaurant, but, you know, I like the idea that you're trying to do a shuttle to downtown and that's great. However, I picture sitting on a deck, sipping an iced tea and overlooking the lake. You know, we kind of, we don't have a lot of opportunities on the lake where you can do that. I think of going across the street to Bellino's, you know, and, and you have to look across the street, across the park to get that feeling for the lake. I think having something here would be fantastic.
We, we've included ten thousand square feet. And that would be, I think, capable of sustaining coffee shops and a restaurant. We're happy to consider more. We did consider more in the original concept. And the feeling was on some of the community members we talked to, take those out. We don't want to see activity in, there after hours, for example. It might cause noise that might drift across the lake. So again, that's a community input. One thing we've begun to do is, it's really, I guess I call them public amenities. And that is private operations that are open to the public that are not intended for the exclusive use of the residents, but are open to invite the public, which of course includes coffee shops and restaurants. But the other area, and I believe despite COVID, I do believe this, this will, will continue. The other area of enormous growth has been in different kinds of fitness activities. There's just the conventional fitness studios. But as well, in, in Cambridge, we have, and, and many of the communities inside Greater Boston now, rock climbing clubs are very popular, boxing clubs, ballet. So, and these are usually, you have to design the project so it helps support them. Because to get stuff that's really acceptable to the community and serving the community, you're not looking for top rent payers. But you kind of want to look and see what's available in the community already. These are community-based amenities. We're open to that kind of component to the degree the community would like to see it.
Thank you.
So, um.
Who's next?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that clearly.
I'm not sure if it was, it may have been background noise from one of the members. I muted them. Jim, I think you have the floor, if you want to go ahead.
Okay, all right. I, I do appreciate the fact, and probably anybody that's sat with me on the board basically understands how I like to step things in to a site and certainly this does that. Whether, whether it be into this site or be into another one downtown, which the, which the surrounding area basically is at a lower profile than the project going in. So I appreciate that. I look forward to see how the architecture gets developed. When we talked about this site before, for the previous owner or current owner, whatever the situation is at this point, one of the things, and I, and I know that the friends at Quanapawit are quite interested in this. And I know there's certain issues with the COMCOM on it, which was to clean up the edge of the lake along in here. Now, I know COMCOM wants to leave it more natural basically so that animals basically can come and go freely along that edge. But that's just a matter of what you put in for planting. At this point, there's a lot of dead trees, there's a lot of vines running up trees, just killing everything. And if anybody spends any time there, they'll know that there was a planting scheme along that whole edge at one time, but it's very much overgrown. So I look forward to some sort of conversation between this development and COMCOM and basically the friends of Quanapawit as to how we can clean this, clean this whole edge up and make it better. That's sort of where I'm coming from. Also, there's drainage issues, because I walk this a lot. There's drainage issues basically on the incoming Main Street and basically coming into this area that need to be fixed. So that's one of the places I'm going to come from. But I also am interested to see how this architecture develops over time.
Just quickly, the emphasis on architecture will be to be contextual and to feel like it's part of Wakefield and feel like it's part of this setting. You put your finger on one of the areas that needs careful attention. In Needham, we had many of the same problems along the waterfront bank. We also had extraordinary overgrowth of poison ivy. And so you're right, it takes a, a, a little bit of balance between clearing out, you know, the dead wood liberally and eradicating the poison ivy. But, you know, you just, everyone works together and tries to come. Fortunately, that's a, you know, that's probably, the site itself is two thousand feet long. If we, if we look at the elongated context of it, it's probably closer to three thousand feet. There's a lot of area to work with there. So I think you can create areas that are very, very natural and very inviting for local habitat as well as creating some areas that are, are a little bit more to encourage quiet recreational usage. So I, you got a lot to work with there.
Anything else, Jim, for now?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll go. You hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So thank you for the presentation that you and your team put together. For me, this is a hard site. So one aspect I'm looking at it as, I know it keeps being called the transit site. To me, this is not a transit site. It's not near the train. It's not near, you know, like with Wellington, it's right at the train. There was a couple, a couple of other ones, the one in Woburn that you had mentioned. They're right at the train. To me, this is, it's not a transit site, you know, shuttles and everything, that's fine. But I just, I'm not looking at it in that aspect. One of the pictures that you showed was, it was a little eye-opening to me when you actually superimposed the size of the site into the downtown area. And that's huge. I mean, I'm looking at it, that I'm picturing these buildings now are going to be like me walking downtown surrounded by these tall buildings. I think it's just, it's, it's too much. I've kind of reached my capacity for, for more apartments and more buildings and everything that's going on in the town. For me personally, I think that, that we've gotten very close to our limit of having too much. The massing of this, I just think is, it's a lot. So I just want to be upfront with what my feelings are for this. I just, I'm having a hard time struggling with the amount of space, the amount of units, the size of the buildings. I know that it's just conceptual right now, but it's, it's, there's going to be a lot that it's going to take for me to kind of get on board with this site being built up like this.
I certainly understand that point of view. It is a twenty-four and a half acre site. And if you do the math, you find out that basically you have about twenty-four units per acre. Now, by comparison, your forty B site, I think you call it Terrence Lane, is a hundred and ninety units, three point seven five acres. That's fifty units per acre. So it's actually fairly low density. What, what is, what, what, what feels a little different is it's a very, very large site. But I would hope that the approach to the site would, would have very much a different impact than the one you worry about, that is to have a canyon-like effect. But I certainly understand that concern. And it's certainly not the objective of the project to encourage that kind of feeling. It's quite the opposite. To make it feel a little bit more like a village. Part of that would be guided by how much you want to add in the way of amenities and how much you want to try and blend it with what's downtown. But anyway, those are our objectives, but I do appreciate the concern.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Yes, I'll go next. This is Greg McIntosh. I have the same concerns as Amy. I know we keep talking about the lake in this instance and how we want to make the lake and how the lake is, is kind of the centerpiece of town, but it's only one piece of town. We are a small town. And we're talking about, I think you mentioned that Terrence Lane was one hundred and ninety units. I think, I'm pretty sure it was actually a hundred and seventy-three. Going from one seventy-three to over six hundred, I think that's almost three and a half times the number of units, which is our biggest development in town. Someone could correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's a correct statement. And it was also a forty B. It's just kind of a hard sell in my mind, no matter what it is, to go from a, a totally different site. I understand the density issue you raised, but it's just a very different area with, this is the centerpiece of town. You've said it multiple times yourself, that the lake is what kind of draws people to town. Going from one seventy-three in a, in an area that isn't the centerpiece of town to six hundred, just in my mind, completely changes an aspect of this town. And, and that's one of the, you know, aspects to look at when issuing a, a special permit. And then also a few times you've mentioned already, you know, drawing input from the town and from the neighbors. And if, if my understanding is correct, I believe you've had multiple meetings with a group, the Friends of Lake Quanapawit. And they have actually put out in their newsletter that they are not in support of a six hundred unit building. So it just seems to be kind of against the, you know, we're, we're going to take community input. But community input was given and it wasn't taken. So I, I know you, we opened this meeting saying you're only looking for what, you know, you need in an application. But I think before we even get there, you know, community input i- is a big part of this. So I, my, my concerns are really, is exactly the same as Amy's. And I understand with the density issue you say, but it is still by, by special permit. And just going from one seventy-three in a completely different area of town to this is a large, large step up.
I certainly understand that. I guess I would, I would make two notes. The first thing is, as, as hard as, as, as we can these days, the reality is that commercial development is, is less friendly intrinsically to a lakefront than residential development. There's no backup generators here, there's no biochemical storage. There's no, there's no uses on the site that may come with biotechnology or others. That's one of the reasons. We do those kind of developments. We enjoy those kind of developments. But this site has a strong bias in terms of its compatibility with lakefront to residential. The other point is, is much more general, which is, I've been doing this a while. I've worked with Governor Baker and, and his staff. The, the problem we're facing in, in Greater Boston and even in communities like Wakefield directly is the housing prices escalate because there isn't housing. It's just very, very difficult to get housing built. Yep, this is six hundred units. It's, it's, it sounds like a lot. It, it's, it's something where I think I would ask you to measure it over not what you see now in a year or two, but over the decades of what is needed to sustain viability in a community like Wakefield where, as in all of Greater Boston, your housing stock continues to age. Most of the housing stock in Greater Boston was built in the fifties and sixties. So the need for housing and the preference of a lot of the market is for this kind of housing, in particular rental housing. Although, as I mentioned earlier, we would be quite interested if the town was open to condominiums. I do understand the concern. I, I guess I'd ask you to look about it as a, in kind of a longer-term, broader picture. I think that as a use, it, 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 it is a best, is a better use than, you know, a, a commercial use. Just stand on the site sometime and look at the existing office building, okay. But then look to the right, it's a big open-air garage. It's, it's not the kind of thing you would today want to invite to be next to a lake. And so this is a different kind of approach. It does. It is, I completely understand that it is. A little bit of a shock to the system to look at this way, and we certainly. Can make changes and we certainly can work with you to make it more acceptable.
Having, be, being a person who lives about two miles away, I certainly have stood on the, the site multiple times. So I don't think that's a problem. For me envisioning anything. It's not just the site that I think we're worried about. You have to understand that this impacts outside the boundaries of the site.
I do. I agree. I understand.
So. That's all for me.
Thanks, Greg.
Oh, can I jump in again? Sorry, I had another just quick thing. Another concern that I have too, and I know, and I usually when construction things are going on, it's kind of, you just kind of learn to live with it. This is something that's going to be two to three years, like you said, of construction. That means that that end of the lake is. Probably shut down and nobody can walk the lake. And that, I mean, this is a huge, huge thing for not only our community, but for the communities, surrounding communities. People come from miles around. To come and walk the lake. And then when they're here, they go and they visit downtown, they go out to eat, they shop in our stores. I would just hate to see a two to three year. Time span where potentially this could be shutting down the lake that people aren't able to walk here. And it's, you know, potentially could hurt businesses as well uptown because people, oh, you know, we'll go walk somewhere else and we'll go out to eat somewhere else. For say, you know, and I know that that's just, you know, what if kind of situations, but it's other things that concern me to think about having it shut down.
Oh, no, I, I understand your concern entirely. Our Brighton project on the, with the monastery is. Actually inherited three acres of Olmsted designed parkland as part of the site. Including, believe it or not, a 40, a 40 headstone cemetery. And so we have to develop means of insulating those types of areas. In an area like this waterfront and you can do that. You can, and in fact, if in pushing the buildings back and segregating and eliminating. By, by and large, surface parking. Great chunks of the site can be undisturbed. We, we should absolutely be able to maintain the walkability. Of that area in a way that is not affected by any of the construction. Even with the, the areas needed for materials and such. This kind of construction isn't terribly intrusive in it, in itself, but you know, we, I, I hope that when people. Go back now and look at the, the Olmsted property, they will see that we've, we were able to protect it very well and enhance it. As well as on that particularly property we inherited, believe it or not, an operating shrine to Our Lady of Fatima. And that has as well.
Can we, can we, can we move on to something else here? This is getting a little long-winded, isn't it?
Who's that?
I'm sorry, if that was a member of the public, I must apologize here. This is not a public hearing at this point. We are just entertaining this pre-application information and asking questions of the applicant. So I appreciate your patience here, but we would ask that everyone, we are not entertaining public testimony at this point. If they come forward with a formal application, there will be ample opportunity to ask questions.
But I could, could I just request that, that there's some reasonable alignment with the topic at hand and not these divergences? That's all I would request. I mean, it just taxes everyone's patience. That's all. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I shut up.
Other board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, I, I kind of want to build on what Amy and Greg said. I do appreciate the approach of pushing the development away from the lake. I appreciate the approach of increasing. The pervious surface. But 600 units seems like a lot in terms of density. In terms of when they showed the site plan as well, I think it's a lot of building mass for the site. I understand the ratios that you, you demonstrated between. Terrence Lane and this, but when you're looking at the acreage here and making those calculations, it'd be helpful in the future if. Not to include the wetland area where you can't develop anyway. If we could look at and concentrate on this, the portions of the site that you can actually develop on, I think that would be helpful. Uh, I think, you know, adding a thousand parking spaces here, not that you're adding, I know. There's existing parking there, but the site is so underutilized now where that building is, I do think it's going to make major. Changes to the way traffic flows in that area. So it would be helpful to look at. Not what's there now in terms of the number of parking spaces, but to what the impact of the, the project would be. I think there's some potential here, but the 600 units is a, does seem a bit much to me.
Could I ask you a question? Do you feel that a condominium component would be something that mitigates that?
I just think, you know. I, I'd like to see what you have to, to bring in, but I do think some ownership there would be helpful, quite frankly. And I would chip that I don't think one restaurant or some public amenities there is going to have that much of an adverse impact on. Downtown Wakefield that you shouldn't look at it. I think it's an opportunity. To have an amenity there that people in town would really enjoy. So I, I hope.
Well, I will certainly, we'll certainly consider that. This, as I said, this is draft one out of what is likely to be many drafts.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
I think Mike's trying to get in, but his, I don't know if his thing is, is working now. Oh, he needs to unmute.
Thank you, Amy. Does this?
It's.
Not really.
All right.
All right. Sorry, Mike. All right. I think that's everybody. I, there's not much more I can add as, as chair here. We would certainly cover all aspects of the site interview. Including the traffic, dorm water management, landscaping, all of those aspects, seeing more detailed architectures. So that we can better understand. How this site could potentially be developed. And I'm sure we would get into all of, all of the details at that time. It would be able to. Spend time in each area and get public input on each area as we get through all those details. So. Again, there's not much more I can add that hasn't already been expressed at this time. Again, given that it's a pre-app. And the party hasn't even applied. But it sounds like they, they are certainly planning to at some point. So I would, I would defer any future comments at that time. So with that, Brian and Mr. Darty, is there anything else you think you need from the board at this time?
No, we appreciate the comments. We very much appreciate your time. I always find that these are, are very helpful. And we, we'll take what you've told us and, and try and make some progress.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question, if I may, you know, because my goal on this whole thing is to get. Input from the board. So we heard, you know, obviously a traffic study, economic impact report. Mr. Lucy had mentioned something specific regarding traffic. And, you know, I want to make sure that we're responsive when we talk to our traffic consultants. And make sure that things are looked at, that the board considers important in that regard. So if I could ask for you to Mr. Lucy. Just to kind of restate, because I think you mentioned something, Tom.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of parking spaces out there now, but it's. So I think the traffic study shouldn't look at current conditions for what's there now. And in terms of use, because I, everyone goes by there all the time. There's barely anyone ever parking there, other than people walking the lake.
Yeah. And what, I get it. Thank you. That clarifies it. One, one of the issues with any traffic study right now is COVID-19. Because there is no traffic. So, you know, for any project, that's going to have to be dealt with. You know, timing wise, because there's, you know, to do a traffic study now for anything is really not valid. Because there is no traffic. So we'll have to figure that out also.
Well, it takes time. It takes time to develop. We usually. Sit with the town, with the engineers of the town, with the community to develop the parameters of the study. And that takes time. So that's not going to be overnight, but.
No, and we will, Mr. Chair, reach out to the traffic advisory. Committee to make sure that anything that the town's peer review consultant, VHB, would require is addressed. In any traffic study that would be done for an application.
Brian, I have a question about that too. When, what we learned from the Terrence Lane one was about the red lights that were going out close towards. Towards 128, that that's DOT that sets the timers on all of those. So I don't know if that's something that VHB looks into or how. If that's something separate that you would have to bring up with those, I don't know if you've ever come out of that. The pathway there to try to get out onto North Ave, but the light never turns green. So. I don't know if that's something, you know, with DOT that you would have to work with separately, or if that's something that traffic advisory would look into as well.
Yeah, I think traffic advisory would initially look into that.
Okay.
I do.
That might come into play on, on the other side with 129 being a state road.
Yeah, we're used to.
But again, they will set those parameters. They'll set them.
Yeah, we'll work with DOT.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, you know, again, as you said, this is a pre-application. This is, things are moving here, you know, the, the input. We appreciate the candor of a lot of the board members. It's very helpful. And, you know, we're, we're in the drawing board stage, or I should say cabinet, cabinet force is. So we will, we've heard a lot and I think. Jay will act accordingly, correct?
Yes, thank you. We really appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we can pause briefly here just to sort of change gears. Our next other matter. 581 to 583 Salem Street. Brian, this is also, you're going to represent as well, right?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I ask for just a few minute recess to use a mentor? Is that okay?
Sure. Um, if, if folks want to entertain emotion, we could pause the recording meeting for a few minutes if that is so.
Or we could like take care of other things we have to do.
We could.
We could approve the minutes if you wanted to do it now as compared to the end of the night.
Okay, I'm fine with that. If folks are fine, Brian, if you want to just step back.
Be back.
I still don't know if other board members had similar feelings. That's okay.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 8.
Second.
As written.
I was waiting for that.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay. As with all of these remote meetings, all votes will be taken in a roll call fashion. So. We'll go regular voting members. Joe's not here, so I will call upon Mr. Lucy. So Chip.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And I approve. So that's unanimous five zero. Approving the minutes of April 8, 2020. Let's see, we have other matters.
I'm back.
And he's back. Okay. So you're ready to proceed?
Yeah.
All right. So 581 to 583 Salem Street, bylaw section 190 dash 45E. Again, a pre-application meeting. Is anyone with you tonight on that one?
Yeah, so. With me.
We'll just introduce them.
Yeah, I will. Mr. Mandel, Bill Mandel is here. And also Jim Cook, are you here?
I am.
Oh, there he is. This is Jim. Andy Zawiski, who is the architect on this project is here.
I'm here, yes.
It is Andy and John Ogren should be here somewhere. There he is. So John over from Hayes Engineering is here also. I think Johnny, do you have control of the screen? Are you able to do that?
I will try.
So, okay, Mr. Chair, if you can.
That. Okay, we can see your screen.
Great. So this is another pre-application meeting. Bill Mandel and Jim Cook are the principals of Ocean City Development. They own the property and have the property under agreement at 581, 583 Salem Street. Which to orient you on this plan, this is Pleasure Island Road on the left-hand side of the screen. If you, so that's heading, that, that's obviously the Wakefield end. So this is. Kind of more on, as you're heading to Winfield, after you get through that intersection on the left-hand side. As you can see, there's two pieces here. There's a unique opportunity here because. Bill and Jim have both of these properties under control, so they're able to put them together to create. You know, I would say a better development rather than, than something awkward. As you'll see, as we go on, these properties are pretty tired. The site is pretty tired. The roadway out front is pretty tired. And what's interesting, as we go through this, John will walk you through. That on the other side of Salem Street, which has been more developed. The amenities are better, the sidewalks are better, et cetera. We're again looking for site plan feedback on this. And so you can give that, you know, I don't know if you will require a traffic study on this application after you. See if you can make that determination and give us direction. And, you know, that's the kind of the input, obviously at this pre-application phase that we're looking at from the board to see what's going to be. Modified on the site plan requirements. John, I guess we'll keep this up for a minute. Just again, as you look at this, John has delineated the zoning districts. So this property, as is the entire corridor, is all zone business. Business owned district. There's a tiny little corner, which is really not applicable to this site. That single residence, it's kind of awkward. The way this whole area is zoned. I don't know why that strip along 128 was left zones, single residence, but. The majority in the middle between the residential neighborhood way on the other side of the street. And in this side of the street is zone business, but that's the way it is. So John, can you kind of take us into the next?
Yeah, well, this, like Brian mentioned, this is just a street view of. Looking from across the street towards the site and see there's two. Buildings, one on each parcel. There's the gym towards the rear of the property and now upward Salem Street. There's a two family that. And I think there may be, at least at one time, there was some business there. It was Montrose Hydraulics.
As you can see, yeah, and, and just to add, you know, you've got a real mishmash going on here. There are already three residential units. There's. The, the building, as you look at the screen to the right, is, is a two family. There's a residential unit in the other building. And, you know, so you can kind of see the way that the street meets the lot. It's kind of a mess. So go ahead, John.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that kind of jumps out on the site, these sites is it's, it's much building and. Their remainder of the property is essentially pavement. And you can see Salem Street transitions. The pavement from Salem Street transitions right onto these sites. Brian, do you want to try to do the?
Yeah, why don't you do it? You know, I, I think it might be helpful to, to, you know, further orient the board, John, to do your, your kind of drive-by. So you can kind of see, you know, how this orients with the other side of the street and what else is going on near it.
Did, um, did it switch? Are you seeing?
Not yet. We're still seeing the, the photo of the, of the site.
Yeah, I haven't figured this part out yet, switching back and forth. You see it now?
Yep.
So this is, this is basically coming from Lynn Field on Salem Street into Wakefield. Just as you pass the, where the river crosses Salem Street. You have the Mental Equipment Company on the left. Obviously, basically an abandoned building. You have a very lovely building to the right. Hayes Engineering. There's a, a two family on that same right side as, as our properties. And then across the street, so we'll have to see. Here, you can see there's apartment buildings. As Brian mentioned, this side of the street, you can see there's, you know, street trees and sidewalks and curbing and. On our side of the street, as I said, it kind of transitions. On our side of the street, as I said, it kind of transitions. From the pavement in Salem Street right on to the actual sites on that side. And as you kind of travel past in this, right here. Again, more apartment buildings, and on our side of the street, just to the left of the property is. That Wakefield Gas and Lake Department, essentially their yard where they store transformers and equipment and such.
Yeah, I believe they rent that.
And as you get up to, you get up to where transitions into, there's some, I think it's kind of a. Some kind of personal hygiene or hairdressers, and there's a small. You know, office business area, and then there's an office building, a couple, couple. Lots down from the site, that kind of gives you the. The streetscape, and that there is definitely a difference between one side and transition to the other.
Great, so you know, we're just trying to orient the board to give you an idea of what's going on in the area that we're discussing. So, John, can you bring up our, our site plan? Or a sketch planner, I should call it, site plan hasn't been developed.
Essentially, what, yeah, what we're proposing is a building oriented towards the left side. That would be the side where the. Gas and Lake Department has storage, parking. To the right of it, one entrance on and off of the property, proposing, this would be a four-story with. Nineteen units, breakdown on the bedroom there, at one and a half parking spaces per unit. That would require twenty-eight and a half spaces, as the site plan lays out, we're showing thirty-one spaces. We're also showing that the actual parking is set back, so there's fifteen feet, so there's some opportunity to provide some landscaping. Along the front and buffer the parking from Salem.
Yeah, and then, you know, part of, part of this process will be, and you know, we want to talk to you a little bit about that on our site plan, that we're gonna. Have to transition into that front mess that's out on Salem Street with, you know, some curbing. Just to really differentiate the site and work with the. Engineering Department and DPW on how to transition that. And make it a good transition into our site, you can see that, you know, basically, there's a lot of green space that will be added, the exact. Calculations will be shown on the site plan, the total lot now is basically paved, the trees in the back. Are gonna be, you know, they'll stay, a lot of them are on the abutting property, one is on ours, but. There's really a nice buffer there, I mean, those are really full grown and mature trees, so there's no plan to touch those, we can't touch them anyways, but they fit in well. We think that this is a good opportunity to be able to take two kind of. Odd lots next to each other, and merge them, you know, that's always a goal of, of the board. To take two properties if you can and make them, make them work as one better, versus separate. Mishmash developments on each, which has kind of happened over the years there. Does it, did Andy send you any of his ideas, photographs, John, just to, because he's at a very early stage, but just conceptually?
You mean as far as the floor plan, the outside?
Yeah, the outside. Yeah. Do you have building looks?
Looks very familiar.
Yeah. Andy, do you want to, are you there, Andy?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, could you maybe just pop in and just tell the board what you're thinking, architecturally, work here?
I, can you hear me, or do I need to be unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, yeah, this is the building we did on Main Street, I worked very hard with Jim to develop it. The reason I'm just putting some photographs up is before we really delve into the, the look of the building, we'd like to get a. A sense of the board of what kind of a general concept that we should approach. This was a very modern style building that we did on Main Street, and we worked very hard with the board to get, get it right. And I, I think it came out very well, I trust that you guys are, are happy with the final result. Can you flip another picture, John, there, this is a rendering of a building that we're proposing, actually an IP switch. But it's a little different style, it's not the modern style, it's more of a traditional look, and. In a lot of ways, the neighborhood up on Salem Street, in my opinion, may lend itself more to this type of. Design rather than the very modern, industrial, modern type of look that we went for on Main Street. Again, we're just showing some concepts, and we'd like a little feedback on, on what the board might be comfortable with before we do a lot of development on the. On the building elevations, John, you want to put another one up? And this is another building that we did on North Ave in, in Wakefield. Again, a very modern type of look, but a little more mix of traditional materials. It's, it's a nice blend, it's not as industrial, but does have the industrial touches. And this is right, well, it's on North Ave, so I won't say it's around the corner, it's a ways away from our site. And maybe another building, John? This is a building we're doing right now, North Attleboro, it's under construction, I don't have a better rendering of it, but again, this is a very. I would call it industrial, modern type of look. And then I think I have one more. This is a building that we're proposing in Peabody, this is a four-story with park and under. The building on Salem Street would not have any parking under, it would be four-story on the ground. The parking would all be surface parking, but again, a more traditional approach, you know, it's a contemporary building, but. Not, not quite the industrial materials, more traditional materials and traditional design elements. I think, is that the last picture that I gave you, John?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
So, again, just if we could get some comments on, on what direction the board would be, would be comfortable with. And we really want to develop a nice, nice set of plans for the building.
I'll pipe in. I think as far as the look of the stuff that you're showing goes, for myself personally, I prefer the. The one on Bennett Street, the one on North Ave, I like the mixed materials. I think it's, it's a nice touch, I think it does have a little bit of a modern aspect to it, but it's, it's still a traditional style building, in my opinion. I know we talk about it a lot, the different gateways into the town, and where that building is, is definitely a gateway into that side of town. So I think it's, it's important that whatever we do put there, that we're gonna get it right and make sure that it's a beautiful building. So in my mind, I could see something more along the lines of 600 North or 5 Bennett, something along those styles.
Thank you, very good.
So the question I, I would have this, Chip, why did you not consider parking under?
Well, cost is a big, a big issue, it's about $25,000 per vehicle to do parking under. It makes the housing less affordable.
I mean, to me, you've got a great opportunity to create a lot more green space, I guess if you didn't want to do parking under. So here you've got a big long building, and we're gonna see a quarter of it out on the street. I would like to see a different orientation, kind of like 600 North. Where you saw more of the building and less of the parking, like, put the parking out back. Figure out, I'm sure John's looked at it a thousand times, or you have looked at it a thousand times, but one of the things of. The ground level at 600 North is there was able to be some really nice planting, a sidewalk. And then maybe you can get everybody else on that side of the street that owns a building to step up and do something with their fronts, John. Just a quarter. You know, as you, as you get everybody to join in along, along that front, those would be my comments. Here you're gonna, unless you do a heavy screening, which you could do in 15, I, I mean, I'd want. The parking to disappear, that would be my feeling, because you're taking half of the lot, and I know it's less pavement than there is. But there's an opportunity, maybe, maybe like 600 North, you know, you do half. The building with some parking underneath, or something. I just think you can be a little bit more creative with the site. I'm okay with the number of units, I, I do think you need, Salem Street's busy, Salem Street's tough, I do think you're gonna need some sort of. Traffic study to just tell us, you know, probably that there's no impact, but I think we need to hear it. Because traffic is something that the town is very high on, and Salem Street in particular, I mean, as we did Irving. As we've done other buildings along this corridor, there's been a lot of neighbors, like, have you tried to get out of there this time or that time? So, I think that's important.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to agree with that, I think the building needs to address the street more. I think, right now, you know, when you look at it, you look into the site and it's a lot of asphalt, this isn't changing that condition that much. You have an opportunity here to reorient the building like the one that is across the street. And I think try to hide some of the parking behind, because anything behind it's really just 128 anyway, so I completely agree with that comment.
If you, if you look at, on the street, all the buildings that are on the street face the street, including the one across the street. And, and when you point to North Avenue, it's the same thing where it's on, where it's on the street and the parking's behind. There are some business, businesses down the street that have parking in front, some of it's storefront, some of it's office space. You, you might look at materials that are more blended with that down the street, which is like the one across the street's brick. The colonial type of stuff that's down the street is brick, then you've got the assisted living project. Or elderly project basically down there, which is, you know, got its own character, basically, so. I'm not sure that North Avenue is the right thing for here, on the other hand, I think the orientation's right. And I do think the parking should all be out back, and as Chip says, if some of it could be under, that would be great, too. But it, it really needs to be oriented to the street and push the parking in the back.
Anyone else? Alright, I'll, I'll take a turn while others might be contemplating, I'll just, something else that just jumped out at me when you showed the initial picture, and we're familiar with the site. We actually permitted the gym that I think is there today. In addition to the incredible amount of pavement on the site, is the striking utility pole that appears to be right in the middle of these two properties. And I don't know where it is relative to your proposed curb cut there, but I don't know if you've thought about an opportunity. To do something about that with the town, but it's just a very busy utility pole that's gonna cut right in front of your property. And then again, if you were to turn the building towards the street, you know, now everyone's sort of, it's right in, right in the face, so, just something to think about. I don't know, maybe you've already thought about it, and, but it's just, I would, I would say, take a look at that as well, see if there's an opportunity there to. To lessen that visual impact, and maybe put the utilities underground or whatever, but. Any other comments from other board members at this time?
Okay, John, do you want to discuss why the building is oriented the way it is?
One issue with orienting the building. Which is basically parallel with Salem Street is, there's existing sewer line that services the two abutting properties to the east. And I don't know if you can see my pointer at all, but.
We can.
Basically, the sewer runs through here like this, and then out to Salem Street. And the reason why is basically the gravity sewer stops in that area, anything further down Salem Street towards Winfield is on. Basically, pump, sewers is pumped due to the grades, so. As I said, there is existing sewer that's, that's currently being utilized by the two abutting properties. That cuts through that parking lot and limits what can be done in terms of a building in that, in that area.
Is there an easement, John?
Could not find anything of record.
Then move it.
But the physical, the sewer itself exists, and.
So move it.
May not be possible to get that to work, gravity.
I, yeah, okay, I would feel that you could probably move it to the right in that little bump out somewhere to be. I don't know, I think, I, I don't think that should be the, the. End-all be-all of, of getting nineteen units on this site is that there's a sewer line that, that does two, two buildings. I mean, that's gotta be, what, a six-inch line, maybe a ten-inch? I think you gotta look at the options and tell us that you physically can't do it or whatever, especially if there's no easement. Because this just doesn't, it, it doesn't, doesn't do your building the justice it should be, you should have a, a front to it. In my opinion.
I agree, I don't think we should let a sewer line dictate what happens on this site.
Okay, we hear you, you know, we'll, we'll do some research on that, and, and try to figure that out.
Okay, any other new comments, again, given it's a pre-appen? More to come, potentially.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing, so I mean, the, the biggest thing I'm hearing, even though it's only a nineteen-unit building, you're gonna require a traffic study.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be that intact, but.
I mean, it's really only, it's really, I mean, it's an increase in, in, it's sixteen units because it's three there. And then you have a business that's already operating there that won't be there.
What do we do with water?
So, get somebody to say there's no impact.
I'm sorry, somebody else had a question?
Yeah, didn't we do the same with Water Street, Del Carmine there? I mean, it's the same.
Same sort of thing, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, this is Greg, I don't, I don't know if it pops up on your screen or anything.
Yeah, we sorry, thank you, Greg.
No, I mean, that's why we're here, so we, we get the message, and we'll, we'll deal with that.
Okay, so building orientation, parking, alternatives, architecture, you heard some feedback. Anything else you got, what you need, you think, Brian?
Yeah, I, I think that's very helpful, you know, especially the traffic study aspect, and then the building orientation, you know, we'll, we'll look at that sewer and see what we can figure out. If we can't, or, you know, we'll have a good reason, and we'll come back and talk to you about it.
Okay.
That's what we'll have to do, but we, we, you know, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that you want, you know, some, you want some real, like, why it can't be done. Right?
Or how it can be done.
Yeah, I get it.
And, and if it can't be done, then start thinking about how are you gonna tuck away some of this parking so that it's not all in your face?
Okay.
You know, maybe the building becomes an L, this is a pretty easy building to build, it's pretty square, pretty rectangle. You know, maybe you gotta do something different there to, to. To do something, I don't know, that, you gotta listen to all the points.
I think we're fine.
Okay.
Very helpful, thank you.
Alright.
Um, did, who owns the street?
John, it's the town, right?
Yes.
It's a town road, so curbs, parking, curbs, sidewalk, all that comes from the town?
Jurisdiction-wise, Chip?
Yeah.
Yes.
You don't have to go through the state, is what I'm saying.
No, we wouldn't.
No.
Didn't we have to go through the state when we were farther up at Pleasure Island Road? And Dunkin' Donuts, and they were doing all that reconfiguration?
Yeah, that was because that was within the tip project, if you remember, when they were putting those traffic. Yeah, that was because that was within the uh tip project, if you remember, when they were putting those traffic lights in.
Okay, so.
So the state had jurisdiction on that because it was because they were because it was.
And the on and off ramps.
Yes, had impact to the highway.
Okay.
We're not within that distance.
Okay, good. Makes it easier.
Okay.
I think we're all set.
All right, thank you, Brian and Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. You too.
All right. All right, just transitioning to our next topic here. Third matter on our agenda this evening, Zero Cherry Lane, AKA Zero Greenwood Street in Nilu, discussing a site plan. Where to begin? Um, so so um there's there's been some activity since our last meeting, um since we approved this variance on our at our April eighth meeting. And the applicant has actually gone back to Concom. There's been correspondence with the building department with with uh town council, various parties. And he was prepared uh to come tonight and discuss some of the aspects and some things that have gone on as well as an updated site plan. He then requested yesterday uh for continuance, basically to to get a um an updated and stamped uh plan together and asked to come to the next meeting. But we had already published our our agenda, so so it's still on the agenda and we're here to talk about it uh to a certain degree, and that's part of the reason, I believe, um town council is here as well. Um, so I don't want to go. This is sort of unprecedented territory. There's this, as I said, there's a lot has gone on since the uh last meeting. Conversations, correspondence, electronic emails. And it is through it all come to my attention that potentially that the plans that um upon which we based our previous variants were improperly rendered um and represented in terms of professionally engineered stamp plans. And and after conferring with town council, the the feeling is that one course of action that um we we could take and may consider this evening is to rescind that variance. Uh, it's not something I've been part of before and perhaps other board members have not. But to do so to rescind that variance and then have the applicant perhaps reapply properly with properly stamped plans and we hold a new public hearing and go through the the process again. I I think is is a course of action that we should consider given the circumstances. Again, I don't know that the applicant is here or any other interested party, so um I I would reserve that we don't get into too much detail upon that variance or the plans or the potentially new hearing. That should be done in a public hearing um after proper renotice. Um, but to have that process begin, I think what we need to do is is entertain a motion or make a motion. Um, and if so voted, that motion would be to hold that new public hearing to potentially revoke that variance on said basis and and initiate a new process, potentially a new hearing process. So I will pause there just to see if anyone has any general questions um or if town council wants to add anything at this point. I don't know, Jack Roberto or our building inspector said he may be joining as well this evening, so I I will pause there and see if anyone has any comments or questions.
If Tom's still on, I'd love to hear from him.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I am.
The Liz.
I am, I am here. Yeah, I've never seen anything like this. I I spoke today uh with um uh I'm sorry, yesterday with Cliff Rober, who is the surveyor who had worked for uh Mr. Liu. And he said that uh he will no longer have anything to do with his former client. He is very upset because uh he stamped a a plan in twenty eighteen and signed it. And he believes that Mr. Liu reproduced that signed signature and stamped block on three plans that were dated twenty twenty, which in fact, Mr. Rober did not produce. One was the plan that was the basis of your April eighth decision. Uh, another was a plan that uh said it was uh approved by the Conservation Commission on April twenty three. And then there was a third plan which was to be presented to you tonight. Mr. Rober again was extremely upset. He said he'd be happy to talk to your board. Looking through the Bobrowski text, it's not clear to me that anything uh like this has happened before. The Bobrowski does deal with the possibility of a ZBA on its own motion seeking to modify a decision after it has been filed with the town clerk. And all he says is that for sure, if you're going to do that, you need to treat it with the same kind of legal gravity that you would that you did the original hearing. That is, you've got to send out notice to everybody. And here the notice, of course, would include to the applicant himself as well as the butters. And also you have to do publication. But I as the chair says, I think the purpose of the hearing would be to determine whether to rescind the prior uh decision. And if that prior decision had by then been recorded in the Registry of Deeds and your board decided to rescind, I think the decision to rescind would itself have to be filed with the town clerk. And after twenty days, it could be recorded in the registry to make clear that the original decision was improperly procured.
And at that point, if that appeal period did then expire, that the applicant could choose to refile. That's again at their discretion, but that's potentially what could then happen.
Tom, can they can they refile or is there a two year delay?
It's a good point, a good question. I I've got to look into it. I I don't want to shoot from the hip. I hadn't thought about it, yeah.
That's fair. I I mean, I have no problem with going forward and making a motion or discussion to rescind this application.
Right, just that discussion needs to take place in the form of a public hearing, so that's where I go. I don't want to go too far down that road.
Oh.
But um but the other thing that just something else to consider, just in the process of these these conversations took place, he was also, you know, nearing the the appeal period, wanting to get a building permit. Um, Mr. Roberto was reviewing the plans and what came into question was the variance we granted on the front setback may not have been appropriate or the right number. He needed ten feet, we gave him fifteen down from twenty. So if he really needs a ten foot variance and we only gave him five feet, um that's an that's not gonna satisfy what he what he was planning to do on the site. So that was gonna potentially require um that couldn't be done under a modification either. You can't modify the variance, right? So that would have to be refiled. So I think either way, potentially this was gonna end up potentially being refiled in some form or fashion. But this other uh information that that we spoke of and Mr. Mullen elaborated on brings to light obviously some other concerns, some larger concerns um about the the validity um of those plans and whether um we should enter down that uh the road of possibly rescinding. So um any other comments, questions from other board members again, because some of you might hearing this for the first time, yes.
One quick question. This is Greg and maybe this is more appropriate but might require Tom to look into before our next hearing. What is the actual legal standing for us to actually, is it almost like an evidentiary hearing? I mean, if Mr. Liu comes in and says, no, those are the correct plans, this guy gave them to me. What's our obligation?
Well, it it seems to me that the um at any hearing like this, you'd want to look into a couple of things. First, what are the facts? As I understand from the surveyor, well, I've told you what he tells me. But you didn't tell me that under oath, you know, you probably want to hear it in a hearing. And maybe I I can't conceive of it, but maybe there's some kind of explanation that would satisfy you. But assuming that this was an improperly stamped plan, uh then the next question is, okay, so what? Because rescission is a fairly major for all I know, maybe unprecedented um step to take. So if the difference between if the if the changes that Mr. Liu made, if he made any himself uh on the plan um were de minimis, if they weren't significant, um then maybe your board might want to just, you know, wrap his knuckles and say, well, we're gonna leave the decision as is. But we're not happy with the process.
Well, he's, there is a, there is an email basically where he admits basically that he made some modifications and apologized to the the to the site surveyor basically. So, you know, as far as a case to be made, he's already admitted to the circumstance. But you're right, I mean, the the fact that maybe the draw the the slight modification in here and and so the question then is, you know, how big a boo boo is this? And how big a slap do you want to make of it? Of course, the obvious one is just pull the whole thing and let him go through the whole process again. You know, I we we were presented with something, we made a decision basically, and we made the decision based on what was submitted to us. If in fact it that was all inappropriate, then I I kind of think he needs a full slap.
I mean, to me, this is all a conversation and discussion that should be had during a meeting to rescind or not rescind as compared to here.
Right, because then the the applicant would be here with an opportunity and himself, the the engineer may join.
And if he. If he convinced us we shouldn't rescind, then we can move forward at that point.
And and I guess that that's really, I think we're kind of getting my question and I think I heard from Tom is it might be unprecedented, but I guess my question was more, what is our legal basis to rescind? Is it, you know, based on essentially a decision based on, you know, I don't know if I want to say the word fraud, but.
I'd use it. I'd use that.
And I think I heard from Tom, it might be unprecedented, so there really might not be an answer to that question, so I.
In in the end, we need, I mean, whatever the end is, we need a lit reg legal survey with all the legal setbacks on it for record. Right now, we don't have it.
Right, and one that's driven properly to scale.
Given all, given all those things, I think we should move forward with a public hearing on whether to rescind or not rescind this this app this approval.
Well, I just have a question too for Tom. So if he's falsifying site plans, and then if we were to rescind and he were to come back and try to do something again, how would we? I mean, in my eyes, that if this is what happened, you know, in my eyes, I'm looking at it that he's falsifying something. So how would we know in the future that that's not what he's gonna do again? Normally, when if a petitioner were to withdraw something, we do without prejudice, but I feel like how would you do something like this without prejudice?
Well, you know, usually we do this on the honor system, you're right. And if we decided that somebody had abused that system, uh your board might insist at that at any subsequent hearing, the surveyor actually show up and 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 attest that the plan is his.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Do we have the discretion to rescind with or without prejudice? Like may may, you know, put the the two year waiting period in effect or not?
That's a good thought. Let me think about that.
Good.
I mean, I think we'll have some time because of of posting and all that. Gail?
Yes, I don't think, I think it would have to go on our.
A month from now?
June tenth to be able to um advertise it correctly. So.
And I also don't think that we should be concerned about the cost doing it ourselves in a case like this. I mean, it's not a huge cost, right?
No, no.
Just more work for you.
Oh, I don't, it's it's nothing, but um it would have to be advertised in the item, the twentieth and twenty seventh, uh well. Yeah, we we don't have a meeting, um wouldn't be enough time for a May twenty seventh hearing, so.
Okay, and then the the next question, Mr. Chair, procedurally, I would ask, would I mean, Mr. Liu thinks he's just coming in at his next meeting. Would we ask town council to write a letter and telling him that we're going down this path? Or you or what's the what's the next piece of the procedure?
Well, if we were to, if you were to hold this uh hearing, of course, Mr. Liu would have to get notice. And so the the notice would say uh that the the hearing is to determine whether to revoke his variances based on the possibility that they were procured with inappropriate, inaccurate, or even fraudulent plans. I have no problem talking uh to his attorney. I have never actually spoken to him. I have emailed him several times and he's been quick to acknowledge the emails. I don't know whether his lawyer is still involved in the case.
I see a pattern here.
Say if it is his attorney.
Well, there was correspondence up until last week. We just don't know the current situation or what we happen in the future. Or in future meetings, if, you know.
So does this need to be a motion and a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Uh, I just want to see if anyone else has any other comment again, just in before we proceed. All right, so I would entertain, uh the chair would entertain a motion to hold a public hearing to consider the revocation or rescind of a variance that was granted by this board on April eighth, twenty twenty based on the possibility of inaccurate or fraudulent information and or plans being provided to the board during that hearing process. That is.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Can can we talk about the motion?
Any discussion on the motion?
Do you want to use the word fraudulent in it?
Tom, could you word a legal notice for me?
Uh, sure. You know, I I don't. I've got to say, I I really am not bothered by the use of the word fraudulent because the given what I heard from the surveyor.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't do anything wrong.
Was it, there was an or in there anyway, so.
There's the lawyer and you coming out, Greg.
Right, I did say inaccurate or fraudulent information or plan.
Yeah.
Correct. All right, so any other discussion on the motion? All right, so we will do a roll call vote of uh the four regular boarding members in in attendance plus. Greg, you want this one? How about you step in?
Sure.
All right. Chip?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
And I vote uh I, so that is unanimous. So we will proceed, we will um give public notice to uh the applicant to bub public to the butters as we normally would any new hearing. Tom, we can talk offline how we want to, you know, any other communication we want to have with the the applicant or their attorney. And then we will proceed from there at that time, we believe, June tenth, but we'll see if that all the dates line up there, right? The timing, okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Tom, for.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Bye bye.
Okay, um pressing ahead with our next matter this evening, twelve Elm Chris Drive, Michael Sal. Michael Salvo, modification of a decision. From. Two thousand nineteen regarding a pool, it was in the materials. That Gail provided to us ahead of the meeting. I see Mr. Salvo on the, on the line here.
Hey, guys, thanks for your time.
Yes, welcome. So if you can just state your name and address for the record just once more, and we'll proceed.
Yeah, Michael Salvo, twelve Elm Press Road in Wakefield, Mass.
Okay, welcome.
Thanks.
So can you just describe for us what it is that is. You're looking to change from the decision and we approved last year?
Yeah, the decision was for an in-ground pool and. For budgetary reasons and a few other reasons, we've decided to go to an above ground. Makes more sense for us, for the space of the yard, the use, and if we ever want to get rid of it, it's. Little less of a, of a lift. But more than anything, I mean, I'm in construction, the COVID nineteen's kind of really crushed my commission, so. It's budgetary, but it works.
Okay.
Is it taking up the same footprint as the plans that you showed?
No, it's much less, it'll be a fifteen or an eighteen-foot diameter round pool.
Amy, it's seven additional feet from the street. But sets back from the property edge at the same amount.
Okay.
And I think if I remember this right, originally, there was a retaining wall going in. And a fence, I assume the fence is still going in, but the retaining wall's not.
If it's needed, it will go in, but yes, correct. There was a fence there previously without a retaining wall, and it'll probably go back in the same spot.
And and I think you presented a fence at the time as well, didn't you not?
I did, because the pool had bumped out some of that yard and.
I mean, you've got to put a fence in around the pool, I assume it's going to be the same fence that you previously got approved.
It'll be a fence with whatever is required by. The zoning laws.
Well, I think, I think you actually presented us with a fence type.
It'll be the same, it'll be a wood. You know, stockade fence, like the same, the exact same one that that's on the rear of my property that was put in by the McCubbers.
Gail, is there anything in the file showing a fence?
Let me look.
A style?
I thought we talked about it, but I don't remember.
Yeah, the only thing the decision references is the potential retaining wall.
It doesn't say anything about a fence?
No.
I think we talked about the fence to match existing.
Yeah, there's a picture and that's it, it's just a picture.
Is that, is that, is that what you have now?
We don't have a fence now.
That's on the, the back of the McCubbers, that, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Nothing on a fence. No.
That will end up in Jack's hands then.
Yeah.
He has to have at least a five-foot fence.
Yeah.
And again, what we granted in the variance. Was to have it in the side yard, so this, again, if it, if it was changing the nature of that approved variance, we couldn't do it. We couldn't even consider it as a modification, right? But it was to grant the variance in the side yard. This is also in the side yard, it has a different footprint, different style. And again, the only other provision or condition was was related to the retaining wall. So I think procedurally, we're, I think we're okay entertaining this as a potential minor modification, and that's why Mr. Salvo is here. It has the same, as you can see from the plan, it would have the same setbacks from the rear and the side as the previous one, so it doesn't. Create any new situations there that we would have to consider. Or that he would have to apply for additional.
Increases the setback from the front, I believe.
Yeah, and it sits more on, it sits more on the flat section of his property as well.
Right.
Right, although the front wasn't, because it's pretty well from the front.
My, my opinion is, given all the current situations and what Mr. Salvo wants to do. I would consider this to be a minor modification, changing the pool style.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay.
I move that. Per the plan presented to us. That we. Grant this as a minor modification to the previously approved plan, to the previously approved case.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, the voting members in this actually are here, myself, Amy, Chip, Jim, and Greg. So I would suggest we, we have the same voting members. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we got to do roll call, my apologies, Chip.
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, okay, so that is unanimous.
Just one thing, the plan is dated five to twenty twenty, just so we know.
We'll record that, yeah, so I'll be issuing Mr. Salvo a letter. To the building inspector to be added to the file, noting that the, with the board has taken this action tonight with an, with a. An indication of the date of that plan, Gail, so we'll.
Okay, good.
It it'll be added to the file with the proper data.
Okay.
For the record. Since this is not a new decision, there's no appeal period, so I assume if time permits. Go visit the building department in due course, once we get the paperwork squared away, so. You should be good to go.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, Gail, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the agenda. So we already approved a minute, so that's it for other matters, are there any other matters that were not considered within the forty-eight hour? Posting period, anything that has come up, Gail, since then?
No, not that I know of.
Okay. Then the next matter before us is just any clerk or board comments, anyone have any topics to discuss this evening?
Gail, can you remind me of the summer, are we still going to go one meeting in July, one meeting in August?
That, yes, and you know, I don't have a schedule in front of me. I'll look into it tomorrow and I'll.
I just can't remember, I think we were doing like the third Wednesday.
I know, I can't remember it, I, I go by the previous year, so whatever.
So I have.
Well, look.
I think we touched on this.
Our chair has it.
Of course I do.
I know.
Of course.
So I had in my calendar, because we did, I think, tentatively discuss or discuss this previously, July fifteenth, which is the third Wednesday, you're right, good memory. And August twelfth, so that would be a normal expected Wednesday.
I'm gonna, well, hopefully, I'll be in Aruba.
Yeah, good luck, good luck on that.
With a mask on.
You're gonna have to wear a hazmat suit.
So I don't know, I mean. I've only ever missed one meeting.
Okay. As long as we can assure ourselves a quorum, again, we have some time to. Change it if we need to, but just keep those dates in mind, put them on your calendars.
Probably not a whole lot new coming in.
Right.
No, just some little things, people have been inquiring, but I don't even have anything, there's an addition, I think a garage, but I don't even have the applications yet.
Do we have anything for our next meeting?
No. No, I I have nothing. And Mr. Lou's going to have to, like I say, go on the tenth. Because of advertising, I have to do it fourteen days ahead.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, Brian was considering the pre-apps in later in May, but when we knew this meeting was going to happen to perhaps talk about. Zero Greenwood Street, then he he brought those along, so we, we'd at least do them all together, and he was able to. Pull his teams together and do that, so, so, yeah, right now, there's nothing for the twenty-seventh at the time. But stay tuned in case something come.
Yeah, by August, those two that were presented tonight, my, one of them might at least come. By then.
I think two hundred quantiles a ways away.
Yeah, me too, but Salem Street might may file by August.
Maybe I can zoom from Aruba.
You don't want to do that.
Absolutely.
But I might have a drink in my hand.
An umbrella in, an umbrella in the cup.
Show us the beach.
Yeah.
Alright, any other business tonight, team?
Hey, just a quick question on Tarot Lane, I don't know if you've seen their. Rent signs up in front of a couple of those little houses, have you heard anything about, I forget their schedule?
The owner called the office last week. He wants to, he wanted to know if. He could rent those out for nurses and doctors, the frontline people. And the hospitals and so forth, but I think, you know, I don't know if he's just not ready to do the project yet. So. It did sound like he was.
Whole street was blocked off today, though.
Probably, probably for the bridge work.
No, they had equipment way up in there, so.
I don't know. Didn't sound like he was going to start anytime soon.
Remember, we, we were. Questionable on his ability to do this from day one, so. I'm not surprised by any of this.
Well, we'll see, we approved it in November, right, so.
Yeah, lots happened since then.
Okay, any other matters for?
I have another motion.
Guess what it is?
I was just making sure there was no other business before we got there, but, but that motion's always in order.
Alright, let's all meet at public kitchen, let's go.
Goodbye, everyone.
We haven't.
Oh, okay.
Got a vote.
Yeah. You have to make the motion.
I did, make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Alright. Chip, are you in favor?
I am.
Amy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Wave your hand.
Not the head.
Hopefully get the audio next time, Jim? Greg?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, we are in adjournments, I appreciate everyone's time to sign tonight. Have a good night and thank you for joining. Be safe.
Yeah.
Bye.
See ya.